Okay, good evening and welcome to the January 9th, 2019, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present tonight, so I'll call the meeting to order. First item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of December 19th, 2018, Planning Commission meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Okay, if none, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have three public hearings scheduled for this evening, the first of which is an annexation Plan of Services and an annexation petition for approximately 1.8 acres located along Joby Jackson Parkway and a nail drive. Ginger McCreary is the applicant. Ms. Tomlin, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner. This is an annexation and plan of services for approximately 1.3 acres. It contains a single-family home. This also is approximately 300 feet of right-of-way along Joby Jackson Parkway and a small portion of a nail that when Joby Jackson was improved, that was included in that, so it's about 70 feet from the center line back. But you need to conduct a public hearing and then make a recommendation to council on this annexation. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Okay. Is there any presentation that needs to come up at this time?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Before I open the public hearing and ask for comments, I'll briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by. We'll open the public hearing. If you desire to speak either for or against this proposal, please come to the microphone, state your name, and give your address, if you would, for the record. Keep your comments to no more than three minutes, if you would. No more than three minutes. Any questions or comments you have, make them toward the Planning Commission. If you have questions, the staff will make a note of your questions, and we'll try to answer those at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open this first public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions by members of the Planning Commission? If they are known, we're ready for a motion.
For approval.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item B is an annexation Plan of Services and an annexation petition for approximately 21.16 acres located along Veterans Parkway. Fred Snell Jr. is the applicant. Ms. Rush, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioner. Chair Lam. The property owner, Mr. Fred Snell Jr., has submitted a petition requesting that his property be annexed by the City of Murfreesboro. This request contains two parcels located along the north side of Veterans Parkway, which contains approximately 19.94 acres. The annexation also includes 500 linear feet along Veterans Parkway right-of-way. So a total would be, total acres is 21.16. The study area is within the City of Murfreesboro urban growth boundary and is contiguous to the city limits upon the northwestern property line. Staff prepared a plan of services for the annexation of the subject property, which was included with the agenda packet. Of note, the sanitary sewer is not available to the study area, however, the Murfreesboro Water Resources Board has approved the use of a modified septic tank affluent pumping system, so modified step system instead. So this is something that the city would be able to report, support. In addition, there was a revision to the plan of services to address the electric services. So the revised plan of services is on the dais today for your consideration. Murfreesboro Electric Department presently serves the two residences that are located on each of these parcels and will serve any future development that occurs on the property. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing, after which it will need to discuss the annexation petition and plan of services, then formulate a recommendation for the city council. I do want to note that there is an adjoining zoned, rezoning for this property for plan unit development, which will be the next item on the agenda. This item is strictly for the annexation. Thank you.
Okay. This item, then, is for the annexation Plan of Services and Anexation Petition. Any questions from members of the Planning Commission? Okay. In this case, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak pertaining to the annexation and petition for services, the plan of services. Anybody? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions about members of the Planning Commission? Now we're ready for a motion.
I'd like a motion to approve the Plan of Services and Anexation Petition.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The third public hearing is the zoning application for approximately 19.94 acres to be zoned PUD simultaneous with annexation, to be known as the cottages at Snell Grove PUD, located along Veterans Parkway. Green Partners LLC is the developer. Ms. Rush.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that I did have a correction for the agenda. The agenda notes that this is Snell Grove PUD, and it should be Snell Cove PUD. So I do apologize for that error. The subject property is located along the north side of Veterans Parkway, west of the intersection of Barfield Road. It's approximately 19.94 acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property to Plan Unit Development District to allow for the development of 45 single-family residential lots, as well as approximately 2.29 acres of commercial development directly along the Veterans Parkway. The density for the residential portion of the proposed rezoning is 2.55 dwelling units per acre. The pattern book that was presented in your packet is, contains development standards for the residential and the commercial areas, and these will be presented by the applicant in just a moment. The adjacent zoning to this property is zoned RS-10, Single Family Residential District, to the west, and the unincorporated Rutherford County zoning of RM, which is Medium Density Residential, to the north, south, west, and east of the property. The Future Land Use Map, Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan, recommends suburban residential land use designation for the subject property. Suburban residential land use is equivalent to the RS-15, RS-12, and RS-10 zones, or alternatively, smaller lot sizes are supported as well, provided that there's additional greater open space with that development. The recommended density in this land use designation is 2.0 to 3.54. Therefore, the density that they're proposing at 2.55 is consistent with this land use designation. The use is identified in the commercial portion of the PUD, however, not consistent with suburban residential. The more consistent with a suburban neighborhood commercial character designation, so therefore the Planning Commission will have to review the PUD request and determine whether or not this is appropriate to deviate from the Future Land Use Map. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on October 22nd at the Barfield Park and the Wilderness Station. It was attended by several residents of the neighboring properties. The key issue that was brought up was the connection to a stub street that is existing on the adjacent property, or on the adjacent development, Christie Charlene Lane, and some of the questions that came up as to where does the city require these, you know, connections to stub streets? So it's something that the city does in practice with subdivisions, so we do try to get two ingress egress methods to subdivision. In addition, the design guidelines, the Murfreesboro adopted design guidelines, also has recommended standards that the streets shall connect to existing stub streets on adjacent properties, and where possible and practical, multiple access points to development shall be developed for emergency purposes. So what they're proposing is consistent with our design guidelines. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing to discuss the matter and formulate a recommendation to the city council. Thank you. I can answer any questions the commission might have.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, in that case, I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Mulchann? Moving slow tonight. Sorry.
Good evening, Chairman Lam. Members of Planning Commission, Rob Mulch and SCC. I'm here tonight in behalf of Greenland Partners to present to you the PUD for Snell Cove tonight. As Marina alluded to, the property, as you can see on the map, denoted, had been the pink and white outline, is to the north side of Veterans Parkway, just to the west of Barfield Road. As you can see by the aerial imagery here, the majority of the property is an agricultural type grazing area on the outside with a little pocket, this, and denser vegetation in the northwest corner of the property on that side. In regards to zoning, we talked about, the zoning classification that we are most contiguous to from the city's standpoint is the RS-10. This is the future sections for River Downs and Rivers Edge subdivisions that you can see denoted in the gold or yellow side, just to the west and northwest of the property itself on that side. The remaining areas around the property are RM zoning in the county itself on that side. As Marina alluded to, we are somewhat in regards to the consistency with the zoning, I mean, the planned use plan from the standpoint of the residential, in regards to our density characteristics, we are actually proposing more open space, which is part of the overall characteristic that allows for a smaller lot configuration than what the, that it allows for straight up, but the land use does allow for smaller lots if we provide more open space, which we are providing greater than the 20% that's required by the ordinance on that side. In regards to the commercial that we're anticipating with this property, we feel that these needs that we have proposed in regards to this book, in regards to the land use itself, are for neighborhood type characteristic that is a complement to the proposed development, but also to the future potentials for residential and other commercial uses in and around the area of Barfield and Veterans Parkway intersection. I will speak to knowing that there is a site plan coming forth in regards to a C store or a gas station C store complex and a self-storage that was, is in the process of being approved by the county Planning Commission in regards to the northeast corner of that property. So we're going to start seeing some future growth in regards to commercial development along the Veterans Parkway, especially in this area with the intersection of Barfield. So we feel that the proposed uses that we will outline here later this evening, in regards to what we're proposing for commercial, will be conducive to what we anticipate for the future growth along the Veterans corridor. Just a couple of quick brief images to give you a little character of what the property looks like. This is the Veterans Parkway face. This is looking along our property on the right-hand side, so you have a five-lane existing major thoroughfare for Veterans Parkway. This is Greenview Drive, looking away from Barfield, so there's a three-lane configuration for right and left-hand turns and heading back into the, well, this is a county subdivision on that side. This is on the western side of the proposed property. This is in Martha's Haven. This is Christie Charlene. This is the road that is the stub street leading to our proposed development. As you can see, the tree line there denotes the differentiation between our property and the existing subdivision there. As you can see, the street runs to almost about 30 feet up to the edge of the property line, but existing water line services run to about 15 feet off the property line for anticipation for, in the future, to be connected to and to provide the services to the adjacent property, which is the property we're talking about tonight. This is the view of Christie Charlene looking back into the neighborhood of Martha's Haven, heading back towards Barfield Road. This is a picture of Mr. Snell's property. Mr. Snell is giving up a large portion of his property, but he's planning to remain on a little more than five acres, which is more or less the rectilinear space, but it's in the middle of our property, that he'll be remaining on the property for however period of time he wants to live with it. He's keeping about five acres of his property for himself, but this is his home, his sheds and all that stuff, just to give you a little character of what his property looks like that he's going to be remaining on. This is one of the homes in Christie Charlene, just to give you a little character about some of the homes, the characters of the homes themselves, and one of the other properties, one of the existing subdivisions around on the western side of the development. The proposed plan itself, we're asking for tonight, is rezoning to a plan unit development. The overall project is a little more than 19 acres. We'll be incorporating two different pieces to this, a residential component, as you can see outlined in red, which is about a little more than 17 acres, and we're also incorporating a little more than two acres for a potential commercial development to anchor this along Veterans Parkway, which, like I said earlier, we're looking in anticipation with the uses outlined in our booklet, to be more in tune with a neighborhood type character, so providing neighborhood services, not only to this proposed development, but also to the existing developments that are there, where any other developments may pop up along Veterans Parkway area. Residential lots, we're asking for 45, single-family detached lots. These are roughly about 55 foot wide. This will give us about a 2.5 dwelling units to the acre. And we're also incorporating roughly about more than six acres of open space, as you can see on the plan itself, and we denoted mostly in the green areas on that side. Lots themselves, this is a little background about the actual setbacks, 35 foot on the fronts and sides in regards to the streets, but we'll have a five-foot separation between the property line and the actual building and 20-foot rear setbacks. One of the key features we talked about in regards to this would be utilizing a modified step system. As you can see on this diagram here, there are two-step easements on the front side of these lots. This is where your septic vault will sit, that will then filtrate the water back out to the forest mains, so it'll be pumped back to the gravity sewer that is off-site in the adjacent future sections of River Downs on that side. And there's also water easements that are incorporated with that, so that's the, our setback on the front is based on that step requirement for having that 35-foot front setback to accommodate those easements for those utilities. As I talked about in regards to the property itself, as you can see, I'm kind of circling the area we talked about in regards to the annexation and plan of services, we have a means to provide an easement for the sewer to come back from our modified step system back to the gravity system that's incorporated into the future section of River Downs. So as you can see me circling on the northwest corner of our property up there, we'll have an easement agreement with the existing developer next door that we have already negotiated that out on that side, to provide that easement to allow for our forest lines to get back to that sewer manhole, to allow that to go back into a gravity flow system on that side. The homes themselves, one or two-story homes, looking at 1,800 minimum square feet of living space per home, two bedrooms minimums on that side. These will be front entry garages. We'll be looking at a garage that's got a decorative garage door with some windows, and also the colors will accent the architecture as provided with that, and it'll be part of a residential HOA management. The homes themselves, the fronts, we're incorporating a mixture of brick, stone, and/or cementitious fiberboard. The sides and rears will be primarily cementitious fiberboard, and final will be limited to only the trimmed soffits and fascias of the buildings of the homes themselves. The commercial lot, as you can see denoted there on the upper, on the left-hand side of the plan there, looking at two, looking, kind of trying to make a small village kind of character in regards to having two smaller commercial buildings. We have no immediate uses at this time. We're just trying to get the entitlements to move forward to incorporate the opportunities based on the uses outlined in our pattern book for potential leasers to come by and pick up these spaces on that side, but we're looking at these being a one-and-or-two-story mixture of buildings on that side, but we're incorporating a maximum of 35 feet in height, so that's comparable to the residential character of the most zoning classifications for the city in regards to residential homes, so no maximum on that side. The plan itself, in regards to what we're conceptualizing for the actual commercial side, as you can see here, the two smaller commercial buildings will be fronting mainly onto Veterans Parkway, so their main fronts will be there, but we're incorporating this into more of a village kind of character. So these buildings, instead of being a typical strip center that you'd see in regards to a development along a major thoroughfare like this, we're trying to make this into a smaller, not-so-monolithic-type structure, so we broke the buildings up into two pieces and kind of put the parking in the middle, so they kind of be shared parking between both buildings on that side, and making this more a smaller neighborhood character kind of field. So we anticipate, you know, with a lot of sidewalks with this, to help link it together in regards to not only, you know, Veterans Parkway, but also back to our residential component and also other neighborhoods that could tie into the sidewalk system, either through our neighborhood or along Veterans Parkway. So we kind of feel that this is a little, cute little, I shouldn't say cute, but I'd say a neat little village kind of setting. We're also incorporating at the back end of the parking, the mail kiosk for the residential section of the development on that side, so we've got, on the one call-to-sac area, allow for parking to come up and engage that mail kiosk that we are now required to provide instead of actual mailboxes at the curb on that side. The buildings themselves, we're looking at a varying style of mixtures of materials, brick or painted brick, stone or cast stone, fiber cement board. These are the types of materials that we want to utilize from the primary type of materials along the buildings themselves, to complement the architecture of the residential portions that we're adding into this development on that side. You know, applied stucco, vinyl, and other, you know, other things outlined in the book will be minor and/or background materials in regards to those elevations on the homes themselves, on the buildings themselves. I've got a couple of character image shots that we kind of want to show as in regards to what we're kind of envisioning for where our architectural character would be like. You know, this is one of those images where you've got, if we do go to a two-story model, looking at this from the standpoint of gabled roofs, you know, good architecture, good architectural character, windows, making it kind of, you know, it can certainly get that village kind of sense in regards to these buildings, so they're not just your typical, maybe, you know, strip center-esque type of commercial structure on that side. And a couple of different visions of, you know, we've talked about, you know, awnings and other such like that, just, you know, good, strong architectural quality to go along with this. Amenities, as I talked about, we've got a little more than six acres of open space incorporated in the overall plan itself, so that's about 30% open space total for the development of that side, which is 10% more than the 20% were required on that side, so you can see the different areas on that side. It'll be anchored by our main residential, I mean, our main amenity feature, which will be the park in the center of the neighborhood, which gives equal walking distance for residents to this park, I mean, on that side. So you can see in the enlargement on the lower right-hand side, we're anticipating a, like a gazebo or something kind of central feature there, some walking paths in and around the park itself, but also playground structures that'll be age-appropriate for all ages we can in regards to children from the neighborhood and such like that on that side. Access, our one main access point to Veterans Parkway will be right there as our entrance there coming in, that's what we call Street A at the moment, and on that side, this will be our main entrance from the residential standpoint, and our secondary access point in regards to the residential and the whole development itself will be the connection to the existing sub-street at Christie Charlene there. So as I spoke earlier, there's a little bit of a gap difference between the actual pavement at Christie Charlene and the property line. We'll be, we've made the agreement with the city to finish out that little section of roadway that does not make it to the property line. We'll extend our roadway out to connect the roads up on the other side of the property line on that side. We're also incorporating a, an entrance way on the commercial side as well. This will be an entrance onto Veterans Parkway that'll allow for ingress egress into the parking facility that'll be just there on the northern side. We also have a access point here in regards to the parking lot on the, as you come in the neighborhood itself, there'll be an access point there to the parking lot on that side, so you can have good circulation in and around the commercial portion of the development. I appreciate your time and consideration of what we proposed tonight, and I'm available for any questions now or after the public hearing.
Any questions from Mr. Mulchann from the Planning Commission?
I got one. Mr. Mulchann, what would you say, you mentioned a proposed commercial development that would be in the county at the intersection of Barfield and Veterans Parkway. What would you say the distance between that proposed commercial development and where this development is?
I'd say we're looking at about, probably about 800 to 900 feet or something, roughly in that 1,000-foot range on that side to get back to the intersection on that side. And it's on the northeast corner. It went through the process of getting a special use permit from the county in order to facilitate allowing that self-storage component to go on part of that property, but there, the anticipation is that they're bringing forth a C store with a smaller, you know, variable space inside that for like, you know, like a UPS store or something like that on that side, but that's going under that corner. We've also learned that during the neighborhood meeting, one of the neighbors did allude to that the properties that are on the northwest corner of the intersection, there's been some look, you know, there's been some understanding that I guess there's been some development opportunities being looked at on those properties over there on that side. So it sounds like this little intersection is starting to get kind of hot from the standpoint of, you know, the growth is coming, the Veterans Parkway is fully built out at this point in time between 231 back to, you know, 840 on that side, so it's a very vehicular oriented, you know, corridor, and there's a lot of opportunities for, you know, commercial and/or residential opportunities along that corridor.
Okay, any other questions from Mr. Mulchann? Thank you, Ken. Mr. Mulchann, thank you. We may have to ask you something after the public hearing.
Certainly, yes.
Okay, I'll now open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Chairman Lam, members of the commission, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share our concerns. We appreciate the role you play in helping grow our community, and it is very much appreciated. My name is Brad Gibson. I live at 1112 Christie Charlene Street, and in the audience here, we've got quite a few folks, if they'd raise their hand, maybe they're in our subdivision. And out of respect for your time, we've tried to prepare some comments to be efficient with sharing some of our concerns, and if I may, I'll read some of those here, and then we'll have some other folks that want to share some information. Primarily, this is going to revolve around the safety of our community from the cut-through that's going to be created by connecting Christie Charlene Street to this new development. And along Christie Charlene Street in our community, about 12 of the 15 homes that are along Christie Charlene, they have children under the age of 18. Many of those are under the age of 10. This was a county subdivision, and as a part of the development of that subdivision, the road does not have any sidewalks. We do not have streetlights, and there are a lot of amenities that will not be similar to the way this connects. And if I may, I've got some bullet points here with some images that I'd love to share with you that will reflect as the comments are made this evening. I don't know who I might share those with. But in essence, what you're going to hear is that the multiple entrance issue, we understand, is an important one, but we would ask you to weigh that importance to the safety of the way these two different communities would connect. And again, out of respect for the need for growth, we're very excited about that. We think it's a great thing. It's what brought many of us to this community. However, we are concerned that our children, this is where they play, this is where our neighbors, as you can see, we're a very close community, it's not just neighbors, it's a bunch of friends, and we congregate in the street and visit, and it was designed to facilitate that. Of course, the traffic on Veterans Parkway and on Barfield Road, they get a lot busier, and that's great, we have no concerns, but creating that cut-through is a very serious safety concern. So as you hear from our folks, you'll hear some of those specific pieces in more detail, but we do hope you'll take that into consideration. We certainly thank you for your time. We believe further development does need to be done to provide an alternative design to the proposed extension, and we think there are some alternatives. We'd be glad to work with you in any way that you deem appropriate. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
My name is Deana Raffo, and I live at 1205 Christie Charlene Street, along with my husband Greg and our two sons. And I'd like to share some concerns about the multiple entrances. And while multiple entrances to a neighborhood are a desire and a request of the City of Murfreesboro, these are not required in the City of Murfreesboro's street design specifications, nor the City of Murfreesboro subdivision regulations. Any street modifications need to be thoroughly scrutinized for their impact on surrounding communities and future traffic patterns. Martha's Haven and several other neighborhoods along Veterans, including city properties, currently have only one entrance and function effectively. As examples, Sheffield Park has two entrances virtually adjacent to one another, and West Wind has but one entrance. When Martha's Haven was originally constructed, the right-of-way of Christie Charlene Street was intended to extend the existing Martha's Haven neighborhood with similar street design and no cut-through traffic. Many factors have changed since this stub was constructed, including this alternative annex subdivision, Veterans Parkway expansion, Barfield traffic, and the Barfield Veterans traffic light. Consideration must be taken to evaluate the changes in the community with regards to the intent and benefit of the Christie Charlene Street extension. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Marie Clark, 1008 Christie Charlene Street, and I wanted to talk a little bit about the impact of the cut-through on our subdivision. Creating the cut-through would unnecessarily create an extremely unsafe area for people to bypass the Barfield and Veterans traffic light. It backs up pretty bad there at peak times during the day, rush hour and that type thing, and it would definitely increase the traffic, several hundred cars a day, we're sure, in a short time span. It's concerning to us both for the vehicles and our pedestrians. As we said, they play, it's a county road, we've been, we have no street lights, bike paths, no curbs or sidewalks, we have a- paths, no curbs or sidewalks, and we have an extremely large drop-off for drainage ditch in one area, and these factors create an extreme unsafe environment for the increased traffic. Where, and what we're saying is, because that traffic light backs up so at times when it's very busy, we're seeing that it could cause potential, you know, cut-through just to bypass the traffic light, and that's what we're concerned about. We have no other means of exercise right there than going across the street, you know, to the greenway when it's completed and that type thing. So right now, we're just looking at it as a safety issue for our pedestrians and the cars coming through. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Ben Roy. I live at 204 John Paul Court in Martha's Haven. While multiple entrances are not specifically outlined in the City of Murfreesboro subdivision regulations, concern for creating cut-throughs and unsafe environments is explicitly acknowledged. For example, Section 5.7 Streets and Pedestrian Ways, subsection 5.7.8 states, "New residential streets should be arranged so as to discourage cut-through traffic and high speeds. Vehicular efficiencies should be balanced against the needs of pedestrians and cyclists in residential areas." Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, and thank you for your time tonight. My name's Michelle Thomas. I live at 1123 Christie Charlene Street. The intersection and the stark contrast between the streetscape design of our neighborhoods will create a hazardous road condition from the difference in lighting to the variance in road width with the current Christie Charlene Street. There's also a curve on Christie Charlene Street that is particularly dangerous. This curve is difficult in the daytime and downright dangerous at night, even without pedestrians. Additionally, much of the traffic, particularly the cut-through traffic, will be unfamiliar with the neighborhood and especially the pedestrian patterns of Martha Haven. Although there are no residents currently of the cottages at Snell Cove, and they don't have a voice, they will too be impacted by this cut-through traffic. While they will enjoy sidewalks and streetlights, the increased level of traffic through their neighborhood will also impact their safety. While noted within the City of Murfreesboro regulations and specifications that proper access to emergency vehicles is necessary, additional entrances is not explicitly called out. Only an extremely rare scenario would this proposed access be utilized. Because nearly all emergency and non-emergency services are sourced separately for the city and county subdivision, these vehicles will not need to utilize the Christie Charlene extension. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Hi, my name is Greg Raffo. I am the husband of Dina, and I have two boys, Lucas and Gabe Raffo, and we live on 1205 Christie Charlene. We are actually the house that is backing up to the first, second, and third lots that are shown on the map there. A personal note here, the small and quiet neighborhood that Martha's Haven provides was the primary factor we chose to relocate three years ago from a home on a busy street in a big neighborhood to our current home. Our son, Gabe, has autism. He gets hyper-focused on his activities and is often unaware of his surroundings and knows little fear. Martha's Haven is a safe place for Gabe to play outside, ride his bike, and skateboard. Our neighbors drive slowly and with caution, looking out for pedestrians, bike riders, and children who may run out in the street to go after a ball. Gabe's getting older and looks more like a teenager now, yet he does not have the same judgment, awareness, or understanding of the potential hazardous situations as a typical kid his age. This is a long-term issue for our family, and he will continue to have these challenges into his teenage years and possibly even into adulthood. Dina and I are very concerned about Gabe's safety should Christie Charlene become a through street. We are at the very end of the street where the transition begins, the transition between neighborhoods is planned, and where visibility will be most impacted because of the tree line. In Martha's Haven, Gabe enjoys a childhood where he can allow himself a reasonable amount of independence to play outside without concern for his safety. Should the plan continue, we will not be able to allow Gabe to ride his bike, skateboard, or walk to a neighbor's home, even as a teenager. Gabe's safety and all of our children's safety is at risk by extending Christie Charlene. I'm asking that you find alternative solutions for this development. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Tabitha Angel. I live with my parents on 1115 Christine Charlene Street. We believe that if additional entrances are deemed necessary, a more logical solution would be to put a second residential entrance along Veterans Parkway. The plan already shows a second entrance to the commercial units, and a second entrance along Veterans would have no detrimental impact to Mr. Snell, the cottages at Mr. Snell co-residents, Martha's Haven subdivision, or any services.
Thank you, Ms. Angel. Good job, by the way.
Good evening, and thank you all for your service to the City of Murfreesboro. That's my daughter, and I'm a very proud mother. My husband, my name is Jeanette Angel. My husband, Matt, and I, and both of our girls reside at 1115 Christie Charlene Street. The proposed design shows a cul-de-sac at the end of the west road of the cottages near Mr. Snell's property. This cul-de-sac exists because Mr. Snell has requested to retain a private entrance and also serves to protect against a lack of future development should Mr. Snell decide not to sell the remaining ten acres that he possesses. In so creating this cul-de-sac, the design allows for plenty of room to create a second entrance off Suzanne Drive of Southwest Estates. This could also be done in a manner to retain the privacy Mr. Snell requests on his property. While this would put a second entrance within another residential neighborhood, adding the secondary entrance through the Southwest Estates would alleviate all concerns for a cut-through created by the Christie Charlene Street extension. While we respect Mr. Snell's request for a private entrance to his property, we ask the commission to consider the impact that this request has made to the several hundred current and future property owners. If in the future Mr. Snell sells the land for expanded development, that entrance would logically become the second entrance for the subdivision. Thank you again, and as a very, you know, certainly very personal, my girls love to ride bikes and play outside, so we hope that continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Angel.
Good evening, my name is Adam Carney. I live at 1107 Christie Charlene Street with my wife Rachel and our soon-to-be-one-in-a-week-year-old Declan. While surrounded by county property, Martha's Haven enjoys a quaint, quiet, peaceful communal setting. The addition of city streetlights adjacent to our subdivision will undoubtedly add significant light pollution to our landscape. We ask that the commission and this proposed plan take all necessary measures to minimize atmospheric light pollution through design and confidence election. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and hearing us. My name is Lester Gonzalez, and I reside at 1111 Christie Charlene Street with my wife Nacy and my grandson Trey McLemore, it's in college. The effect is that there would be significant runoff within the proposed cottages subdivision and evident by the detention pond called out in the design. Extreme care must be taken to minimize the runoff impact from Martha's Haven. Due to the nature of Tennessee weather, our neighborhoods already suffer from significant swelling and ditches and minor flooding in several areas. Additional runoffs would be problematic. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Hi, good evening. My name is Brian Ricks. I live at 207 John Paul Court with my wife Dawn. We back up to the property at the tree line. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the care taken for the, during the construction phases of the tree line. So care must be taken during the construction phases to retain the tree lines separating the cottages at Snell Cove and Martha's Haven. We can reasonably assume that residents of both neighborhoods will want to retain as much of that tree line as possible for privacy. With setback allowances and typical construction practices, we have concern that the tree line could be damaged potentially to a degree that it might not be preserved, and specifically, I think during construction phases affecting the root systems of those trees could happen by accident, you know, there's a lot of things that go on. So, thank you very much for your time tonight and listening to our concerns.
Hello, my name is Jerry Bolden. I live at 211 John Paul Court. And we also are very concerned about the detention pond shown at the northeast corner. It has the potential to be a significant breeding ground for mosquitoes in addition to bordering a couple of cottages' properties. This will also border several Martha's Haven properties. Although detention ponds are considered a typical design feature, this most commonly used in commercial properties where residents are not present for consideration and impact, we ask that you consider the residents when designing this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Schilling. I live at 1004 Christie Charlene Street with my wife and two young children. I also serve as president of the Martha's Haven HOA, and first I want to thank all our residents for coming out, speaking up about their neighborhood and community and taking passion in that. Secondly, I want to thank all of you for listening to us, allowing us this forum to speak, allowing the public matter to be heard, and allowing us to utilize our full three minutes per person. So we ask that you consider eliminating the extension of Christie Charlene Street in lieu of better and safer alternatives. I think as you've heard, we proposed a couple of them, and all we're asking you is to evaluate that. As we demonstrated, there are multiple concerns with that. There are also benefits to it. I think both the developer and the city would enjoy having a couple of additional residents in those areas from tax dollars to community standpoint. While we understand the desire and reasoning behind multiple entrances in a neighborhood, we must also recognize that sometimes that's not the best solution. In some cases such as this, the impact of the entrance can significantly outweigh the benefits. Our residents and future residents of the cottages at Snell Cove will not be able to enjoy recreation outdoors as we currently do. I'm concerned that I will not feel safe to teach my son, my five-year-old son, to ride his bike, which he's just doing now and so excited about it. I won't be, feel safe to push my daughter in her stroller. I won't feel safe to walk to my neighbor's house to have neighborhood dinners, because I'm fearful that I will quite literally meet a vehicle head-on. We have concerns already in our neighborhood, driving on those streets, as it is dark with the significant curve to it. Those who are not familiar with it will be very dangerous to all residents as well to themselves. You may be thinking, why should we exempt Martha's Haven, or why should we do something different? And I ask you, would you not ask that question in many scenarios? Would you not teach your children or grandchildren that just because something is done many times, should it be repeated? That's exactly what this forum was for. Our public comments is for us to consider the specificity of the situation and to consider how the impact of this one may be different from the other neighborhoods where you've put in a second entrance. Murfreesboro is fast-growing, and while we understand the desire to serve that growth, benefit from the tax dollars, and provide housing for those incoming residents, we ask you to carefully consider the impact to the existing community. There are other ways to provide forty-five new homes in this PUD without jeopardizing the safety of the adjacent residents. While we may not be official residents of the city, we are your realtors, business owners, utility reps, engineers, therapists, and many other contributing members. There are better alternatives than impacting as outlined in this proposal. But now you can see our enthusiasm and seriousness with which we take that enthusiasm. Our neighborhood, as you can see, is one in which neighbors not only know one another, but are friends that walk the street to visit with one another and let their children play outside. Please don't implement a change that puts that at risk. That's all we ask. Thank you for your time today, and please consider not extending Christie Charlene. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Charlene. Anybody else? Last call. Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay, Mr. Mulchann, you might come back up, try to address maybe a few of the questions Tree line preservation, talk about that.
Yeah, I didn't speak to that during the presentation, but I can definitely speak to that in regards, with the configuration of the property that Mr. Snell is, you know, that we're utilizing from Mr. Snell's property. The typical lot style that we're participating in here is going to be a fifty-five by one-twenty, but because the length, I mean, the width between the property lines is greater than, you know, two lots stacked at one-twenty plus the right-of-way, we actually have excess room on those lots. So what we're proposing on the plans themselves and what we plan to do with them, we get to the site plan level if this project moves forward, but you can see on the diagrams that are on the plans that you have in front of you tonight, on the lots that back up to Christie Charlene, I mean, up to Martha's Haven on that side, both sets of lots along Street A actually have extra depth. So what we propose to do is we're actually going to propose a twenty-foot wide or twenty-five foot wide tree line preservation zone along the property line between our property and Martha's Haven, but also getting along Mr. Snell's property where he'll be remaining in residence on that side. So we're providing a tree preservation area along those property lines. That will then be on the other side of that, internal to the lots themselves, will be the drainage areas on that side. So our intention is to preserve those tree lines for not only the Martha's Haven subdivision, but also ourselves and Mr. Snell in regards to the development we're proposing tonight. So yes, we are anticipating with the extra depth that we have allotted between the property lines to propose a tree preservation zone that will then, then internalized inside the lot will actually have another zone, which will be the drainage easement on the lot, plus the buildable envelope for the homes and/or backyards of those lots on our property. So we have made every effort to set aside extra land on these lots to allow for that tree preservation, not only for Martha's Haven but Mr. Snell as well, but also for the benefit of our potential future residents within the development itself. Streetlights, I mean, that's, those will be designed in regards to city standards and also the electric company standards in regards to that, so that'll be, the illumination is based on standards that are set forth by the zoning ordinance and also by the utility district itself on that side. So they will be, of course, streetlights in regards to what you typically see in a residential street within the community itself on that side from the city's standpoint. So, yeah, from regards to the amount of light levels, it should be, in regards to the, it's not going to be like the large beam lights that you have on Veterans Parkway, it's going to be more of a street, you know, residential street character type lighting on that side. We talked about drainage and flooding in regards to detention. With, like I spoke about here in regards to the tree line preservation, our drainage easements, this property actually falls directly from Veterans Parkway to the north to our detention area. So actually, all the water that would fall on our property will be moved only on our property and moved to the detention facility at the northern end of our property, which on this diagram that you see in front of you in your books is on the right-hand side. So moving from Veterans Parkway to the detention facility, all the water that would fall on our property will be contained based on what we're required by engineering standards and by state law to keep the water on our property and not actually let that water go off our property onto adjacent properties on that side. But topographically, all the water that deadly falls on our land will go to that detention facility, which will be designed and engineered by engineers to make certain that it adequately takes care of the runoff from our proposed development on that side. But again, the outflow for this property is not towards Martha's Haven, it's actually to the north. As you can see in the diagram in the book, we actually have a wet-weather conveyance, which is a, you know, a drainage ditch more or less that allows for water to move across this property that comes from properties upstream from this and then exits our property in the north. As part of our design for this, we'll be relocating that wet-weather conveyance, because it is not a, it's not a type of waterway that is dictated or controlled by the state in regards to TDEC. So we have the opportunity to relocate that to provide for our detention facility, but we'll be actually discharging any water that's contained in our detention facility back through the existing location point where the water actually flows off the property today. So we've spoken to Mr. Snell in regards to his long-term existence on the property, in regards to all the different weather events that he's seen come and go over the years living on this property. He has not, he had not He has not, he had not seen anything in regards to any type of serious flooding issues or any flooding issues on an annual basis. And based on our, we had a hydrologic study done in order to determine that whether that was a wet weather conveyance or a stream or anything on that side. And the study came back saying it was a wet weather conveyance because the amount of water that flows across this property through that ditch system is minimal at best on the regards to the spectrum of the different classifications of waterways that would have to be jurisdictionalized or non-jurisdictionalized, which a wet weather conveyance is not jurisdictionalized by the state on that side. The connection, the connection, you know, is we do any of these designs in regards to neighborhoods or any, you know, proposed developments, if there's an opportunity for an existing sub-street to be at that property line, we provide that connectivity in regards to a couple of different factors. One, of course, would be health, safety, welfare in regards to providing connectivity not only for city services, but also county services. You know, if at some point in time, these are all public roadways, whether they're county or city, the county and/or city services can utilize those public rights of way to get in and out of subdivisions, whether they're in their jurisdiction or not, to move freely in regards to taking care of emergency situations. The county, when Martha's Haven was originally designed, conceived, and constructed, provided this access point to Mr. Snell's property with the anticipation of either Martha's Haven expanding or Mr. Snell developing his property at some point in time in the future, providing an access point to the property that not only at that point in time when Veterans Parkway was actually Cairo Road, which is now Veterans Parkway, would have access to that, to Veterans Parkway and/or Cairo Road at some point in time the development passed. Now you've also had the connection to Christie Charlene as it was approved when the county accepted the plans for Martha's Haven subdivision. So as part of our design characteristic and the way the property is that we had in order to design and develop, what we're looking here for Snell Cove, the opportunity for that secondary access point was already in place based on what the county had approved from Martha's Haven subdivision. We felt appropriate, as it is a practice from the standpoint and of city and/or county, that you made those connections to existing stub streets for the opportunity for, you know, connections not only just for health, safety, welfare standpoint, but also utilities, infrastructure, and residents and neighbors that live in and around the community to get to and from either their subdivisions or other places within the city, county, or state on that side. So the connection was there. We felt it was appropriate, as it is normally when we do these designs, that we allow for that connectivity on that side to allow for that second point of ingress egress if there ever was a condition that either our proposed entrance to our development or the Martha's Haven's entrance on Barfield Road was ever blocked in some form or fashion during some kind of storm or anything like that, that would allow for not only the city and/or county services to have a second means to get in to help take care of those residents in Martha's Haven and/or in Snell Cove coming from one way or the other. So having that second means of ingress egress is vitally important from the standpoint of providing services for residents either in the county or city, depending on what type of situation may be at hand on that side.
Okay. Any questions from the planning commission from Mr. Mulchan?
I've got two. One is, there was a comment made about the road width differential between Christie Charlene Street and this stub into Street A. Can you, is that the case and why?
County and city standards are different, but we always provide a transitional, you know, transitional space between. So as you come into our development from the Christie Charlene stub in the county, as you come into our development, that right-of-way and/or, you know, the actual pavement width will, it'll have to be a tapered down zone. So we'll make that transition, especially considering that when the development was done, I don't know if it was part of the approved plans or not, it's something I have to go back and look at, that that street was not stubbed fully to the property line. There's a gap in there that we said we would, from the city's standpoint, we would work with them as we go through the site plan process as the project moves forward to include that extra length and allow that to be continued out. And then when it gets to our property on the city's side, let that taper down. The difference in width of the pavement is maybe a foot or two at the max on that side. So that transitional element is not that much difference between getting from what is a county standard to a, getting down to a county standard to a city standard in regards to that. The city's standard pavement width is going to be a 22-foot wide pavement width with a curb and gutter section on that as well. So that'll be, you know, we were not that far off in regards to that taper down. So with that length of that stub coming into our development from Christie Charlene, you'll be, you won't really notice it as we allow that taper out and be fully engineered to make certain of that.
Second question is, I think, you know, as a planning commission, we've been very consistent about having as many ingress egresses and interests and exits to subdivisions as we possibly can have. I do understand from a neighborhood standpoint that this possibly could be considered a cut-through depending on how far back Barfield Road is backed up and someone turning right and going through this to get to Veterans Parkway. That being said, there was a comment made by one of the folks here tonight about any thought process of making the connection, having the second connection going to Suzanne Drive. Has that been discussed at all, either with the city and/or with your developer-owner?
The property in Suzanne Drive actually deadens in Mr. Snell's property, which he's not selling at this point in time. So we don't have the accessibility to get to Suzanne Drive with this development. That's why we showed the temporary cul-de-sac, as you see on the diagram that's on our western side of the property over there. Mr. Snell has not offered up that land or he's not selling that land. So we don't have the opportunity to get our residential street from our subdivision back to Suzanne Drive to make that connection there. You know, whether that, if you look at it from the standpoint of secondary access point, ideally, yeah, it could be a secondary access point, but you know, if you still, Christie Charlene is an important piece of connection to us, but we don't have that opportunity to provide that second connection point right now because Mr. Snell is not offering or selling that portion of land for development to allow us to get that connection back to Suzanne Drive. Ideally, that would be the case, that if the opportunity was there, we would take advantage of that. And whether that negates the need and/or necessitates the need for the connection to Christie Charlene, I don't know if that makes a difference. I mean, that's something, you know, I think the city traffic engineer would have some kind of comment on that in regards to that connection back to Christie Charlene being negated because we had that connection to Suzanne Drive? Or is it just because we had that opportunity to connect Christie Charlene as being our second means of ingress egress? It can go either way, I think, in my book on that side. But we just don't have the opportunity because we don't own the land in order to facilitate extending our streets from our development back to Suzanne Drive at this time.
Mr. Halliburton, if I may, to follow up in a meeting with Rob and Mr. Hazlitt on this project, we asked them intentionally to design this project such that in the future, if a connection can be made to Suzanne Drive, that it will be made. That's why you see the cul-de-sac there and the space left so that that street could be extended. But in staff's opinion, our point of view would be, we want both of those, the Christie Charlene connection and the Suzanne Drive connection. Wherever there is connectivity available, wherever streets have been built to property lines, we would want to make those connections in the future. So Mr. Hazlitt could, at some point in the future, I have no idea, but he could potentially have the opportunity to purchase that property, or a future developer might have the opportunity to purchase those remaining acres. And if so, we will get that connection as well at that time.
Any other questions for Mr. Mulchan from the planning commission?
I just wanted to confirm, and I know before you step away from the podium, did you talk about the mosquito potential problem on the?
Mosquitoes in detention facilities, in regards to, from an engineer's standpoint of how these detention facilities are and what they're dictated to do, detention facilities are a temporary holding point for water. They're designed to potentially hold water from a rain event for 24 to 48 hours. Typically, that's what they're designed to hold it for. They're not typically places where water will stagnate. This is not a retention pond and/or a lake. This is a detention facility, which means you're only detaining the water for the set period of time that the state requires you to hold the water. So for the most part, those are designed to have a allowable point of water, either a point in the design to allow water to flow out of those if the rainwater is higher than the events that it's anticipated to handle, and/or that they are designed for the water to infiltrate back into the ground surface and percolate back into the overall watershed in regards to that. So they're not, they're not meant to retain water. They're meant to detain it for a short period of time to make certain that we don't allow for the stormwater that falls on this property, if developed, to flow downstream and cause flooding issues downstream from this development, which will be going towards the north, which eventually leads back to the western portion of the Storms River, which the greenway is over on that side. So the detention is only short-term, which should not allow for water to sit long enough for a mosquito situation to evolve.
And I would just like to make one more comment, Mr. Chairman. I had a question for Mr. Mulchan, and then I just have one comment to the people that have come out from Martha's Haven, because you have given us a very organized and you've spent a lot of time putting together your presentations tonight. And it's all been very professional, and I can't tell you how much we appreciate that. And we appreciate you all taking the time to listen to our deliberations. You may or may not like everything that we say, but we will go all the way around the world and come back to try to figure out what all we need to do. So thank you for being here tonight and being a part of the process. We appreciate it.
Anybody else on the planning commission have any comments or questions? Ms. Jones stole my thunder. I was going to make that same speech, but that's fine. You guys did a very good job, and I thank you for coming down tonight and participating in our process here. Just, Mr. Mulchan, I don't think we have any other thing for you. If we do, we'll recall you, okay? Regardless of what happens tonight, if the motion is made to recommend approval to the city council, then it will go to the city council with a positive recommendation. If the motion is made and passes that we do not recommend a positive recommendation to the city council, it could stop right here, or the developer could proceed and go ahead and take it to city council anyway. Regardless, before it could ever be approved, it will, there will be another public hearing in front of the city council at a date to be determined. So just letting you all know that, this is not a one-stop process right here for either side, okay? But it gives you an extra opportunity to voice your concerns. I know some of you may not have agreed with some of Mr. Mulchan's comments. You will have an opportunity in the future, one way or the other, if it proceeds, to address those comments if you'd like to, okay? All that being said, there's no other comments or questions from the planning commission. We're ready for a motion.
Okay. I did have some other comments or questions.
Okay.
I just didn't want to keep Mr. Mulchan up here forever. I just wanted to.
I thought you were through then. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
You want him back up?
No, no. I was maybe going to ask Mr. Huddleston a question. And I don't know, and mainly because I think, I didn't ask Mr. Mulchan, I'm not sure this development is really large enough to have done any type of traffic analysis or anything. But in general, if you're looking at a subdivision like this, you know, the number of cars that you're talking about that would come through this subdivision on any given day, and looking at the way the Martha's Haven subdivision is laid out, you know, is there any way to anticipate any type of cut-through traffic? I mean, I do think it looks a little bit like it'd be some of this going on and may not have everybody cut through, but I'm just trying to figure out from a traffic standpoint what we really might be looking at.
And so, Ms. Jones, on your first statement, this is a fairly minor development compared to some of the developments we see. It does have access to Veterans Parkway and to the stub streets have been discussed. We did not think an official traffic impact study was necessary. Theoretically, a right turn off of Barfield, a couple of left turns, and then a right turn on to Veterans gets you back to Veterans. What we do see there is that we're signalized now at Barfield. That hasn't always been the case. Most drivers are going to routinely take that signalized intersection. I did check, I think there was a question, how far does this development extend up from the intersection? It's about 1,500 feet. So there is a good separation between this and the actual Barfield and Veterans intersection. The, I'll steal a Joseph term, he used this sometime. It is circuitous. It's not a straight shot. There are stops and starts and turns. And so it does comply with some of the guidance in our subdivision regulations to discourage the cut-through traffic. Can somebody do it? Yes. Would they routinely do it? I don't think so. And we didn't think so when we talked about it during our development. I think most folks are going to take the path of least resistance, having a signalized intersection. What I'll also say is that the work on Barfield Road and at Veterans Parkway is not done. The roadways there will continue to be addressed and improved by both the city and the county. And to remind you that the signalized intersection there was a joint effort between the city and Rutherford County to signalize that intersection. So we think the stub streets an appropriate connection. There's a possibility for cut-through, but the design and the convenience factor, in our opinion, discourages that.
And do you think that the, I don't know at what point we decide we need the actual access. We will not be having, for example, this garbage and cities, we won't have that crossover traffic. We would definitely have emergency crossover traffic because they're going to take the, you know, the quickest route, whether it's city or county streets. They're not.
Or the available route in the case of a traffic accident or a fire scene that might block the roads. And certainly, that's part of their consideration.
Would it be a consideration to have more of the emergency-type access right there up until any such point in time that possibly Martha's Haven became a part of the city, and then we had regular city service traffic trying to cut through and?
Yes. And so, let me back up and address service delivery. Certainly, solid waste is a, pickup is a service that the city provides today. We don't know what the future holds on that. Both our council members and certainly probably most of the people on the planning commission have followed some of that debate. But the nature of solid waste pickup's going to change, whether we stay in that business, whether the county goes into pickup business. So connectivity for solid waste would be helpful. What I do like to rely on is our guiding documents, those tried and true design criteria, our subdivision regulations, our street specifications. And there's a very specific statement in there that says, when stub streets are extended to an adjacent land, our practice is to connect and extend. And so even in the face of some very well-organized, some very courteous and well-presented discussion by the residents of Martha's Vineyard, when we go back and rely on those founding design documents and those things that guide us through our design and approval process, I reach back to that and say, this is a, this is a policy that we as a community have adopted to extend those stub streets when they're there and when they're available.
And as Sam just said, I mean, the policy is as clear-cut as it can be. It says, "However, under no circumstances shall such streets simply terminate as a stub street." So, I mean, that's the crux of why that street was designed that way. It was designed to be a stub street. And so that's the challenge that I think that I would face in trying to determine, do I go against our policy?
And it does, and I appreciate you all having this for us tonight. I mean, streets shall connect to existing stub streets on adjacent properties. That's just part of the, that might be. But I was just looking at all of our alternatives.
And even with the design of B Street on this project, it appears that it's kind of got a unique cul-de-sac there at the end, and I'm assuming that's designed so that those could be divided into individual lots. Once the property of Mr. Snell were ever developed, that Suzanne Drive would be a stub street as well. So it does, you know, and the justification for that would be, there's a stub street there. So it would be required to be developed that way.
And, you know, one other thing to consider, the residents in Martha's Vineyard would also have this, if I could use this term, but this local street access into the commercial area. I think when we talked with Mr. Hazlitt about his vision for the commercial area, the discussion of neighborhood services, these are not services that people from Rockvale are going to drive in for, or people from North Murfreesboro. These are going to be neighborhood services that are going to be convenient to the residents on Veterans Parkway, and certainly the residents in Martha's Vineyard. on Veterans Parkway, and certainly the residents in Martha's Vineyard in this development. And so they would have the ability to walk, bike, or drive to those commercial services as well, whatever those might be in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one comment?
Sure, Mr. Marden.
Just to want to say, I know it's been said, it's not easy to come in front of this group and to have this discussion, and I know that's important to the families that are represented here. But one of the things that, and it's certainly given me pause as we look at this, so, but I think something that's important as well is the fact that, you know, you're talking about 43 other potential households that may also be in a situation where they've got, you know, limited access to the community that they're going to be in. So not only can we think about, from my perspective, the plea that you've brought to us, but we've got to think about the other development on this other side as well. So I appreciate you being here, but if there are other comments, I'm glad to do that, but I'm prepared to make a motion, so.
Proceed.
I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the project. Subject also have comments?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Like I said, this will go to the city council with a positive recommendation. However, there will be another public hearing at that level at a date to be determined. That's all the public hearings we have on our agenda today. Mr. Anthony, do you have any further business?
I do not, sir.
There's no further business, we stand adjourned.